Welcome to the September 2nd, 2020 virtual meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It is now 6:30 and we are joined by all of our council members with the exception of Dan Hilmer has his excuse this evening. If you are watching us, you know how to zoom in on teleconferencing on Zoom. If you are interested in making a public comment later or making a comment on the issue, the instructions are on the top page of the agenda. Allison is our city clerk and she will be assisting you in that. You can also raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. So let's begin. Do we have a roll call, Allison?
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Haroff?
Here.
Mayor Way?
Here. Item number two on the agenda is public comment. This is a time for matters meant members of the public to make a comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And if you're a group, you can have a little bit more than that. But we would like to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment. And just remember that the city council at this period of time, since it's an item that has not been agendized, cannot go into lengthy discussion or much discussion at all on the matter. It looks like I see one hand and that's Joe Jennings and he's on the top of the list there. Would you like to unmute Joe?
Joe Jennings, it's your turn for public comment.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to thank the people of Larkspur for very generously helping us fund $34,000 worth of programs for the Larkspur Library. Two of the most important are A to C database and U Demi, which are now up and have special applications for people either looking for jobs or looking for learning new job skills to help pursue new jobs. We thought it was very great input from Franklin Escobedo, the librarian, to put the initial funds into things that help people who are unemployed or underemployed. And we just wanted to let everyone know those services that we funded in July are now up and running and helping people. And thank everyone. And secondly, we're closing in on the next $10,000 grant for the Larkspur Library. And that will include hotspots for people so who don't have internet access, entertainment, and then additional education and training and tutoring for students. So I want to thank the people who've already given. I want to thank the city council for its support of our efforts to support the library. And let everyone know that the doors are still open for more donations. So if you could help us, we could get more applications out to people who need them in Larkspur. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Okay.
I'm looking for... I see no email public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll close public comment. That brings us to number three, which is presentations and proclamations. And tonight we have a very important presentation by Mark Van Gorder, the Senior Public Affairs Director for the North Bay for PG&E. I'd like to invite Mark to enter the Zoom room here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can. Can, do you have a video or are you just on audio? Oh, there you are. Terrific.
Yeah, it's a little lag time here, so apologies for that. Still getting used to working from the home environment.
We all are. Mark, do you have a PowerPoint presentation or anything that Allison needs to know? Or?
So what I'm hoping is that I'll be able to share the presentation. I'm going to share my screen here.
Okay.
I'm hoping I'm going to share my screen. I'm clicking on the share screen button. There we go. And I'm going to briefly go over a presentation that involves Google Earth.
So?
So if you could let me know when you see that.
There we go. It's here. Thank you. It's here. Can everyone? Okay.
Yeah, no, I said.
Great.
So thank you, Mayor's Council, Mayor, council members and city manager and and Julian too, for helping to set this meeting up. I will go through this fairly quickly and mainly here to answer questions. But if I'm going too fast, please just stop me. My goal tonight is simply to share with you PG&E's electric system. Because I find a lot of, a lot of questions come down to not really understanding how the system is configured, where our lines run, and why sometimes that requires that we shut off the power. That'd take about five or seven minutes. And then I have a PowerPoint presentation to quickly go through. Most of it is, is something that can be distributed or should have been distributed to the council members. If not, we'll make sure that you get copies as well as its information that may be helpful and is also available to the public. This Google Earth map here shows what I call the Interstate 5 of electricity. This red line indicates 500,000 volts, 500 kilovolts of electricity that comes down to these substations. From those substations, the power gets stepped down to 230 KV. And this will take just a second to load. And the main point of this to show you where, where the power comes from the north, going south and then to the west and into Marin, several locations. One coming from Sonoma County at our substations here. Again, this is a 230 KV line, comes down into Petaluma at the Lakeville Substation, also branches off from Vacaville Dixon area, and then comes down along what most people are probably familiar with is the Highway 37 route and our towers. So coming down from the north, coming down from the east. And the lines generally tie in supporting Larkspur here at the Ignacio Substation. I'll zoom in on it. Many people are probably familiar with driving by this substation at the 37101 interchange. Fairly large, one of the largest substations, certainly the largest in Marin. Coming down from there, it pretty much parallels Highway 101. And I'll get into why that's important in just a moment. But we have the, the purple lines indicate 100, it then steps down from 230 to 115. I will apologize. Let me just briefly take out all these other circuits for clarity. So the green is, is, is the 60 kilovolts. The purple is 115. And it primarily here follows the path of 101. It continues down past San Rafael and gets down further south. There's, there's a Green Bray Substation here. And again, I just want to point out where the power is flowing to and into. If I can put on the city boundaries. This here is the Alto Substation. I won't go too deep into it, but this is, this is in Mill Valley. And a good chunk of Larkspur is served by these transmission lines. Main point again that I want to just make here is that, is that these lines primarily are outside of high fire threat districts. So here again, Larkspur, and I'm going to take that off just to make it less confusing. And I want to put on an overlay of the high fire threat district areas. Yellow or orange, orange, orangish color is elevated fire threat district. The red color, which I'm hoping you will see in a moment, should be coming up, indicates extreme. And our objective here is to maintain power to the businesses and residents in these areas outside of these high fire threat district areas. So again, transmission line is here in these areas that are, that are not in the high fire threat district areas. And now I'm going to turn back on the, give me a moment to turn on the overhead electric distribution, which is orange. So there's your overhead electric distribution. Here's our, the green represents areas where that power is underground. Our objective, and I'll be done with this portion of the presentation in just a moment. But our objective again is to stop the power flow up into these areas where we have strong concerns about potential for ignition during a high wind event with low humidity and very dry fuels. I think we all get the idea, if we hadn't already in 2017, 18, and 19, certainly 2020 has shown us what the lightning can do to cause ignition. And, and then we get the high wind events, we have, we have major concerns. So we're trying to create, for lack of a better word, an island of power. An island that can be served with this electricity coming from these transmission lines. From that, I will stop or pause at least and ask if there's any questions specific about what I just shared before I move on to the, to the, to the presentation of the deck or the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, Mark, this is Kevin. I wonder, just, just because of the, the part of the community where I live, if you could kind of focus on a little bit about, because it looks like the Green Bray area is in a red district pretty much.
Green Bray Hillside.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hills.
The hillside, there you go.
Yeah, that whole area is red.
Mark, are the vegetation, what consists of the urban wildland interface? Are these PG&E's definition of what that is by mapping it? Or is it taken from the wildfire prevention plan that the Marin County has put together? Does that make sense, my question?
So I'm hearing most of what you're saying. I'm getting a little garbled, but I think I take your meaning. Let me rephrase it because I want to make sure I'm hearing your question correctly before I answer. This is not coming from local fire mapping. This is not high fire threat area mapped out by, by Marin Fire or Cal Fire locally or Jason Weber or wherever you go. If it's the Southern Marin Fire District or if it's Bill Tyler with Novato, Marin County has its own mapping system for high fire threat areas. This is not that. What this is developed by the California Public Utilities Commission with input from Cal Fire, Cal OES, PG&E, SoCal Edison, San Diego Gas and Electric and other utilities to create this map in these districts.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Absolutely. And can you tell me the purpose of the substation? Is it just a collector of sort of all of the power lines? Or what is the purpose of a substation? Because you pointed out five very specific ones. I'm just curious.
Sure. So I am not an engineer, electric engineer. My background, I'll just lay it out there, has been in city council with NAPA for eight years and working in public engagement, whatnot. So if you, I can, for specifics about the substations, I'd have to have somebody who really has expertise. What I can tell you though, is that the idea is to step down. You know, if you have electric lines on the poles on the street outside your business, and sometimes they're underground, but you have transformers. And as that power is coming through, it reduces the voltage to a level that you would use in your home or business. Depending on the size of your home or the size of your business, you, businesses may have much larger power consumption needs. But the general idea is that it's stepping down, as I mentioned, from the red I-5 to, you know, to 37. It's a comparable example to 101. But as it comes into the city and the substations stepping that electricity down even further so that it gets into these, these circuits. And they're broken up into different circuits. And so that's the real, the real purpose of them is that they can, is that they can provide the energy to these various circuits. And you'll see this one lights up in a different color as opposed to if I move over to a different one. And if, you know, if I click on it, it's going to tell me. This is what we call the Green Bray 1103. But I think this one may be, you know, this is the Alto 1122. So this is, this is kind of interesting. A little bit in the weeds, but just, I was trying to point out there's some areas that are served off this Green Bray Substation. And there are others that are served off of the Alto Substation, which is located in Mill Valley on Roke Maria's Drive. Again, our objective is to try and provide power from, you know, from these substations. And depending on the circuits and the locations, we'll be able to do that. But that, the substations will just step the power down into what we call, we go from transmission to distribution. So the orange are distribution lines, that's overhead. And the green that you see there is underground distribution.
Are there other questions before Mark moves on?
Quick question, Mark. Is this available for us to view afterwards? Is it online somewhere? So I mean, I'd like to take a little more time and look at it without, you know, wasting your time.
Sure. That is the number one question that I get. And I am still trying to get an answer from our leadership. This is, if you look over here, there are a lot of unchecked boxes. There is some information in this that is confidential, proprietary, you know, specific to customers and whatnot. I need to find out if there's a way that this is shareable. And if not interactively shareable, that maybe, you know, maybe I can zoom into certain areas and see if I can take a screenshot and save it as a PDF so that it's not interactive, but somebody can take a pretty big close look. I don't have that answer. It is the most common answer that I, question, sorry, that I get. And I'm sorry, I don't, I'm going to put a push here tonight to try and get that answer. I don't have the ability to share the Google Earth interactive with you now. And if I can get it, I'll be sure to send it out to everyone, but not yet.
All right. Thank you.
So if there's no further question, why don't you go on, Mark?
No, no, Catherine, before we, before we go on, I just want to follow up on the question that I had before. Because it does look like, sorry. Of the more populated areas of our community, the area that seems to be designated in the red zone are the Green Bray Hills. And I wonder if I could get a little more understanding about why that is.
Why the Green Bray Hills are designated high fire threat district?
Is that, is that what this, this is showing? Is it, it's the fire threat as opposed to the capacity of PG&E to provide distribution of electricity within, in their community in the event of a fire?
So what we have is an agreement that we will not energize areas that are in high fire threat areas. So this is, I pulled this up, you see, this is tier three. It's identified by the California Public Utilities Commission as extreme. I can get you the maps and links to the, to the decisions that were made by the California Public Utilities Commission that explains how they arrived at these mapped overlays.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be fine. I just want to make sure the public understands that the Green Bray Hills are at, include that part of our community that is probably at highest risk as far as I could tell based on this of power shut offs. Is that correct?
Well, there are many areas throughout Marin. I mean, you could, you can take a quick look. What I can share that maybe?
I'm just thinking within the, the city of Larkspur. So looking at the maps that you've shown, the area that is most prone to power shut offs are the Green Bray Hills.
One of the areas, yeah. And, you know, that area also is in our wildfire, are ruled and our power protection plan as a high hazard fire zone.
And that, and that's fine. I understand that. But I want to make, I want the public to understand, at least within the community where I live, that this is a particular risk within our neighborhoods relative to some other neighborhoods in Larkspur that may not be subject to the same risk level.
What may be helpful and also, I can share a link from the California Public Utilities Commission that is interactive, that will allow people to type in their address and they can zoom in and out to just see the overlay. That may be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Before we move on, Gabe, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I'll wait till the end of the day.
Okay.
Okay. So again, I've shared this with the clerk and with, with Director Skinner. So I'll move through it fairly quickly. A lot of it is, is information that anyone can read. And I try not to, you know, I try not to spend too much just reading things that, that are, that are visible to everyone and obvious. But this is a community wildfire safety program. It's, you know, it says for city of Larkspur, there are a few city of Larkspur specific pages. But overall, this is, this is something that we're sharing with San Anselmo and Mill Valley and Novato and other jurisdictions as well. This covers generally the public safety power shut off events in Marin. This talks about the number of customers that were impacted in Larkspur during the time period of October, November. I want to clarify that when we say customers, what we're really saying is meters or accounts. So we acknowledge that while that's an account, we don't know how many people are living in the home. And if one, one wanted to take a ballpark guess of saying an average of 2.5 or three people per home, you know, multiply roughly 6,000, you know, you're going to get closer to, excuse me, you know, 12 or 18,000 people impacted. This is just again, you know, we've got the white outlining the city area overlaid with the high fire threat areas that we just took a look at. This is something that you can, you can read in the packets. We're generally trying to make sure that we are making them smaller by putting in equipment and isolating, as I mentioned, or islanding areas of power and making sure that they also don't go out further. They're also smaller because we're, we're reducing the amount of vegetation around our electric lines so that we may have a safer comfort level about continuing to keep power on in various areas. We're also going, we have many new weather stations out that help us monitor weather events. Anyway, long story short, we're just trying to make sure that we can really narrow down the scope and the impact on a community. Shorter in length, we, we have new fixed wing and I'm checking on this. I think we may have a new helicopter in, as part of our fleet. Excuse me. They're outfitted with infrared and other technology so that they can fly at night if, strong if, if and when conditions warrant. So if the wind is still blowing, we won't have our helicopters and fixed wing of checking our lines until we have a safe situation. If they are able to, if the weather calms down at 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM and they can begin patrolling, they will be checking lines to look for damage that will help identify areas of damage, which allows our crews to begin planning selected areas that they can immediately go out and start restoring power. Long story short, our overall objective is to have smaller in scope by at least 30% over 2019. Shorter in duration by ensuring that we have all power restored, that's our goal, within 12 hours. Smarter for customers, we're simply trying to make sure that there, that are better and more resources available for customers, business and residential. One great example of that is last year we had maps that people could type in their, their addresses, but they had a buffer, a gray buffer zone on them and you kind of shrugged your shoulders. If you were on the border of that buffer, you might say, well, I don't know, my power may be off or not. That's changed this year. It's going to be down to the parcel level. So somebody can really see their home will be on. Quick point to make here, because we're isolating and sectionalizing our electric distribution system to prevent the fire from going up into certain neighborhoods or areas in the high fire threat, you may have one neighbor ask the question, well, my power is, is off, but my neighbor across the street, their power's on. That may happen in certain areas. And again, it has to do with the way that we're sectionalizing these circuits and cutting power off and moving forward. I'll get more into the details about what we're hoping to do to make this easier for customers. And knock on wood, we don't have to have a public safety power shut off at all. This, again, I'll cover this very briefly. It's in the packet. The sectionalizing devices I'll get into, but those are the devices that we're able to turn on. In some cases, many cases, they are SCADA enabled, so radio controlled systems that we can turn on remotely. We are, I'll get into the micro grids or the generation plan. These are just the numbers. They don't mean as much as the explanation behind them. This is a quick overview of what I shared. While I don't have the ability to share that exact Google Earth overlay, these links are very helpful. They're interactive links in the PDF document that's being shared for you. And so taking a look at the mitigation plan, but this is also interesting too. You can find a lot of information about our, our lines and where they're located here. So these little dots, which I still haven't been able to figure out how to pull up in Google Earth. But these little dots represent those sectionalizing devices, which are very strategically placed to try and keep the maximum number of customers' power on while installing the fewest number of poles. We understand that adding another pole on a street block that could be adjacent to someone's home or in front of someone's home is not always welcome. Certainly had some folks frustrated about that. But the whole point is that that one device and pole is intended to keep another 300 to 1,000 customers' power on. That's the reason for them. And they're, they're located in various locations throughout Marin County. I just asked our team to put a little, a little zoom in here on the Larkspur and the Quarter Madera area. The substations, we are, we have a plan. We have several hundred generators on reserve. If needed, if those transmission lines were taken out of service for some reason, I generally expect that that would not be the Quarter Madera, Larkspur, San Rafael, Novato areas. Much more likely that it could be Sausalito or Mill Valley, Bolinas, Salima. But on the off chance that we had to take those out of service, our, our goal is to move those generators out to the substations 24, 48 hours in advance, hook them up to the substations. There may be a period of two, four hours where we have to shut the power down, connect the generators, turn them on and bring the power back up. But the goal is, is to generate power at the substation without coming through the transmission lines to serve a portion of the community if we did have to take those transmission lines out. So that's our plan with those substations and these are the locations. If there's a power outage, we're trying to establish both hardened facilities, libraries, churches, schools, community centers. We have a number of agreements in place, local businesses. We're also looking at with COVID, the possibility of having outdoor sites where, where customers and people impacted may just drive up in their cars to maintain social distancing masks and the recommended practices by county and state health and human services agencies. But that, these are the, these locations that we're working on at the moment. And they will not all be opened at once. We will work with the county office of emergency services. Depending on where the locations of impact are, we will work on opening those that seem appropriate. But real quick, here's the map. You can see it looks very fragmented. I'm very happy to see that. It's not a squishy bubble of unknown, very specific down to the parcel. Medical baseline, many people may qualify for medical baseline. It simply is a discount program for people who have certain medical needs. In the past, I'd heard that this was a challenge for some folks who had who had to have a doctor's sign-off with COVID in place and the challenges that people are facing. That's no longer the case. All customers may self-authorize. And again, there's links here. This whole document can be shared publicly. I'm hoping the tools will be helpful to people, but they simply sign off on their own, and they can get assistance this way, and this will also enroll them in notification programs. PG&E Weather. I'm kind of a weather geek. I like this link a lot. It will bring up this page. Well, I'll skip that. I was hoping to bring that up. But suffice it to say that this will give you a seven-day look ahead. So if somebody wants to check every two to three days, put it in your calendar or something, this gives a seven-day look ahead of whether or not we're going to have a public safety power shut-off, where we're expecting it to be. We go from an elevated status to a watch to a warning. I think of it somewhat like a hurricane without the rain, although I'd love to have the rain. And there's other, you know, there's links here for backup power, other information. But that weather page will tell people whether or not we expect to have an event. Before the general public is seeing that, we would be already communicating and working with County Office of Emergency Services. We'd be talking, most likely, I'd be communicating with Dan Schwartz, Julian, and others, obviously, the fire and police chiefs, to prepare if it looked like Larkspur was in scope for an event. These are other links included with the packet. If council members or staff have questions for me after this presentation, Clerk and Julian have my contact information. I've enjoyed working both with Dan and Julian and others there at the city for the past seven years, so you can reach me anytime you may have questions. Certainly, I've talked with other council members. And then for the general public, of course, they can always contact you directly. But if they have PG&E-specific questions, the best place to go for information is this dedicated wildfire safety preparedness phone number for PG&E. They can email questions here. And again, there's links throughout this presentation that are publicly available to answer a lot of questions. And with that, I will pause for your questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mark, for that presentation. And I also want to thank you for your regular email alerts that you send out. I encourage my other council members to sign up for your email alerts that you send to city officials. So I got two of them, three of them in the last week, I think. So appreciate how timely they are. It looks like, do we have any questions of this part of the presentation? Yes, Gabe, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Mark. Thanks for the presentation. My understanding, like you were going over the voltages, you know, like 500,000 kilovolts, essentially, you know, your transmissions can be like spark plugs. You know, a spark plug is 30,000 volts. So the whole goal is to bring down the voltage or turn it down, you turn it off entirely. So my question is, you know, specific to West Magnolia and Greenbray Hills. You mentioned eight power, eight microgrids, you know, in process in 2020, and lots of sectional devices, which I think are essentially to bring down voltage. How many are targeting that area, and how soon will they be in play?
Well, if I can ask one quick question. The audio is coming through just a tiny bit garbled, and I'm wondering if my video is streaming, if I could turn my camera off. I'm trying. I don't know if the clerk has control over that.
I think if you turn your PowerPoint off, if you're done with it, it will probably use it less bandwidth.
Yeah, and we can see a fine mark.
All right, let's try that. If I can have the question, again, I'm not sure that I quite caught it about the substation. I heard spark plug in substation and didn't hear too much more than that.
I put it in the chat, if you just want to read the chat. Essentially, how many microgrids and sectionals are serving West Magnolia and Greenbray Hills?
Ah, thank you. So, great, great, good question. So really quick, on the microgrids, and thank you for putting that in chat. I appreciate that. The microgrids, the microgrids are going to be deployed as needed to the substations. So whether it's the Greenbray Substation that I was showing, or the Alto Substation, we'll take a look at the weather event as it's approaching, determine which transmission lines may be impacted, and then we would roll generators to those sites, again, 24 hours, 48 hours in advance. So they won't be pre-staged. We don't know where the weather event will be, and we don't have enough generators to serve the service territory. So they will be staged nearby, some in Vallejo. I don't know if there's some in Richmond, but on the East Bay area, but very close where they could be deployed rather quickly. So the microgrids are simply at the substation, and we would deploy generators. The sectionalizers, I will have to ask the number of locations that have the sectionalizers in that area. I don't have the specific number, but I can get it.
Thank you very much.
Mark, can you speak to the recent power outages that were not PG&E-initiated, but they came from the California, what is the CIP or the California?
Cal ISO.
Yeah, Cal ISO, that's the term. Can you speak to that?
Sure.
From what you're talking about?
Absolutely. That's a fantastic question. Thank you for asking it. I probably should just incorporate that these days. It's been a long time since I'd experienced the rolling or rotating outages. It seems like it's been about 20 years. So, very different, I don't know if I'd say very different. Different in the sense that we can have very hot days and multiple days back to back, and that's what we have. I'm trying to, I've lost track. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of August 10th, 11th, 12th. I know it was pretty much the five days leading up to the lightning events that we had because our air conditioner broke and we were sleeping outside. So we have these days where usage exceeds our capacity to supply the demand. You know, the demand is just, is so great to maintain grid stability. That, so that grid, that those transmission lines all web out across our service territory, and then they go throughout the state of California and Oregon, Nevada, Arizona, I think Utah. There's a group of western states. And to me, it's critical to avoid a system failure to maintain a balance. And so we will get a notification from the California Independent Systems Operators. And sometimes that notification is rather short. It may be 15, 10 or 15 minutes. And there's a great link, I can send it to you, you may already have it, where you can actually monitor the state's usage throughout the day. And as we were watching, it would get closer and closer and closer, and we started sending out the notifications to people, "Okay, it looks like, you know, we may have a power shut-off." So that's the difference, I think, with the public safety power shut-off, and we're looking at these wind storms or wind events. We see those coming typically seven days out, five days, four days, a lot more time to plan and prepare. Very difficult for us to determine on any given day where it's very hot and everybody's got their air conditioners going, who all is going to crank up their air conditioners? Everybody's working at home now. The televisions and computers, so much more power is on. And I think that's where we had a lot shorter timeline to prepare compared to, we may have three or four days notice for a public safety power shut-off.
Kevin, if I could follow up on that?
Sure.
Real quick, because this is something that Mark and I have gone back and forth with. I'm still kind of puzzled. I understand that PG&E has to respond to a direction from Cal ISO on supply management issues, because that's their job. At the same time, it's important to remember, in Marin, Napa, Solano, and Contra Costa County, the default energy provider is not PG&E, it's MCE, Clean Energy. And MCE has done a lot of work and incurred a lot of cost in terms of making its resource integration plan working and approved by whatever regulatory agencies have a say in this, whether it's CPUC or Cal ISO. So it's still up, it's still something that puzzles me. Why this is something that is just being directed through Cal ISO to PG&E in terms of these non-public safety cutoffs when we have plenty of energy in the pipeline for our customers?
So if I'm hearing your question correctly, what I'm hearing you say is that Marin Clean Energy has plenty of energy to supply its customers?
Yes.
And why the direction from Cal ISO isn't being directed to Marin Clean Energy?
It's a concern of mine that there is a lack of coordination in terms of the direction that Cal ISO is providing in these non-public safety shut-offs. I understand public safety shut-offs is a public safety shut-off, and that's something that has to be done. But these kind of rolling blackouts that seem to be the result of at least purported imbalance between supply and demand seems not to make sense to me, given the efforts that MCE Clean Energy has gone through to assure sufficient resiliency and energy supply to our customers. So I'm just, I'm confused about it.
Well, and as we've, you and I have talked about this a few times, if there's confusion with Marin Clean Energy, we have people, and this is good for the council and the community to know, my goal, my goal, my role, sorry, as a public affairs representative, is to work with local jurisdictions?
Sure.
And the county, and city management and city staff. When it comes to Marin Clean Energy, we have people who are designated liaisons and partners and have strong relationships with Marin Clean Energy. It almost sounds like, and I think I got an email from you about this while we were having those outages as well, it sounds like a conversation that perhaps Marin Clean Energy would want to have with Cal ISO or with our PG&E representatives and the staff. You know, I welcome the staff and invite the staff there to reach out to. It's a good question. I don't, I don't know why Cal ISO isn't also coordinating with Marin Clean Energy.
So I just, and I appreciate that, and that's consistent with the conversation that you and I have had. And I completely understand frustration on your part in being able to provide a good answers to these questions. But I just want to make sure that our residents and constituency understand that there's a distinction between these rolling blackouts that seem to be related to Cal ISO determinations about mismatches in supply and demand as opposed to public safety outages, which we just, we have to deal with. But the supply and demand issue is something that's, that is something I just don't, I don't quite understand. So I've shared some of the information that you provided to me with my contacts at MCE, and we'll be following up with that.
Very good. Yeah, I do think that's the way to go, speaking to what supply Marin Clean Energy has that may not be tapped or being recognized by Cal ISO and how that plays into our, we're required by Cal ISO to selectively and in a rotating fashion drop anywhere from
I understand.
200 to 400 megawatts of power. But that's a good question for MCE to work with our folks and Cal ISO to answer.
It's more of a policy issue that may require a little more effort that we can deal with here. And I understand you guys are doing your job, and when Cal ISO tells you to do something, you got to do it. That's fine. But it is, it is something that causes me some concern and puzzlement about how it's being handled at that level and why it's being dealt with through PG&E as opposed to the power procuring entity, in which in our case is MCE, and, you know, Peninsula Clean Energy, other CCAs throughout the state of California.
Well, and I certainly won't, I certainly don't want you to have the impression, or council members nor the community, that I'm saying, "Look, I don't have anything to do with that." I'll be taking that question back to our folks that have that relationship and saying, "Look, this is a, this is a high priority issue. We need to look into it and better help the community understand it." So certainly, I'm going to work with our folks and ask them to talk to the staff at MCE. And at some point, we may need to get Cal ISO on the line, too, to have an understanding.
Yeah. So that's a, that's a entirely separate conversation. I don't want to derail this conversation, but I just wanted to let folks know that that is a concern of mine, and that's something that you and I have talked about, and we'll continue to have that conversation.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Scott or Gabe, any further questions? Since this is a public presentation, we often ask if there's a member in the audience who has a question. Would you be entertaining questions from the audience, Mark? Yes?
If there are questions, I can answer.
Is there anyone in the audience?
I can't answer questions about bills.
No. Anybody in the audience who has a question regarding this presentation of public safety power shut-off planning?
I see a raised hand from Kevin Carroll. Kevin, it's your turn for a public comment.
Mr. Carroll, do you have a question about the public safety power shutdown?
Yeah, actually, I have two. One, doesn't really affect me, since I'm in the Flatlands, but I just thought it's something you, as council members, should be aware of. The Sausalito City Council just came back from their summer break, and at their first meeting, they had a bunch of irate citizens who live at Third and Main in Sausalito, because overnight, one of the sexualizing devices went up on a pole with no warning, and apparently, it's blocking a number of people's views. And I understand there's probably no requirement of PG&E to notify residents ahead of time that something like that's going up on what is essentially, I guess, PG&E's property. But I just thought I would mention it to council members, because I'm sure if that happens in the hills in Larkspur, you're going to hear from some people. One question I do have, which I realize you may not be able to answer specifically, but if someone could follow up on it, I would appreciate it. And that's that, looking at that map, I can see that we're covered essentially on three sides with red zones. But the CRCs, there's one in San Rafael, some in San Anselmo, both on the other side of those red barriers, essentially. And then to the south, the nearest one was Marin City. And so since we are covered on three sides by red zones, why there isn't one of the CRCs in either Corder Medera or Larkspur, or, yeah, Corder Medera or Larkspur?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carroll, for that question. I don't know, Mark, do you have any additional?
Let me tell you our process. We have been working for a while now, well, we've been working for several years, actually, with the County Office of Emergency Services. But each year, we try and refine and discuss placement of community resource centers, and should there be one, you know, what, how many different places should we seek? And which, where are the areas that are most likely to lose power? That is the conversation that we have. So based on our assessments of locations we expect to lose power, based on input from the Office of Emergency Services and a collaborative approach, we've come up with those various locations, whether there should be a community resource center. And sometimes it's a matter of actually finding the property of the location. So it's a good question. I will have to get back to council with an answer on, you know, why not one here? I can tell you that the process is to look at the areas impacted, the number of customers impacted, the likelihood that we expect the power will continue. In other words, that we would not disrupt service in Corder Medera and Larkspur. And so it was decided most likely that that's not a priority area. But I'll double-check and see more specifically if there isn't a place that we could look at somewhere nearby, if there's one that's needed.
Okay, thank you. I don't, yes?
I did want to note for Mark and for the public speaker that we submitted a site location to County OES, and they ultimately decided that with the matrix that Mark's referring to, there were better locations in the county for CRCs at this time. So if the speaker wants to engage the So if the speaker wants to engage the decision makers, that would be County OES.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. If there's no further questions, I'd like to thank you, Mark, for the presentation. And hopefully it will not come to pass because there's a lot of people working at home and learning at home and doing all their academic studies at home that need all the energy they can get.
Well, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to, to give this presentation. Obviously we hope that it doesn't come to pass. What I'd like to assure you and, and your community is that we, you know, I feel extremely honored to have such a good working relationship with, with Dan and Julian and, and other folks, you know, at the end of the day, we're all going to have to come together and work together and have strong communications and partnerships to serve the community as best we can. If there is such an event, I feel like we do have that and I, and I really do appreciate it. It's going to make things tremendously better for everyone if we do.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to item four. You may stick around if you'd like or just say goodbye.
Catherine, just before he, before Mark disappears, although it looks like he did.
Mark? Oops.
I apologize. I moved Mark back to a different position, so I will unmute him again.
I'm still here. If you need me, I'm still here.
Okay. I think Kevin has one last question.
I just, I just wanted to express my appreciation because I've reached out to Mark on a number of occasions on a variety of different issues and I really value his willingness to be responsive. He's extremely prompt and diligent in getting back and trying to work with us. So I just, again, just wanted to express my appreciation for his efforts.
Now you can go.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Good night. That brings us to item number four, which is approval of the consent calendar. Do I have any member of the city council who'd like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion?
I'd like to remove 4.6, please.
Okay. Anyone else like to remove any item for discussion? No? Is there any member of the public that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion? I don't see anyone. Okay, so let's discuss 4.6 in a minute. Is there a motion to approve 4.1 through 4.5?
Motion.
Councilmember Candell moved, is there a second? Gabe Paulson seconded the approval of 1.4.1 to 4.5. Allison, do we need a roll call for that?
Yes, Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. All right, 4.6 is open now for discussion. Would you like to start, Scott?
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question. I noticed that is using Zimmer Fund library money to buy a storage space for new CDs, DVDs that are coming in. I was just wondering if this is a permanent structure or a movable structure? Because as there are plans to move libraries, I would hate to build it, you know, have a built-in structure into the library right now. And then six months later, we're in a different building and we just tear it down. That's all.
Who would like to, I see our Franklin, our Franklin, I see Franklin Escobedo, our life, our community services director just chopped on. Is that something you'd like to answer?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a shelving unit that can be moved. It'll just be put in place for now. It's shelving unit that has drawers that can be pulled back and then closed, but it, it's a whole unit that can be picked up and moved. And so when we get to the new building, it'll go with us and hopefully grow. So we can also add to it as time goes by, depending on how much space we have for it. But right now the CD collection is just sort of shelved in a funny way that if, when we have people come back in, they can't really browse them easily. But yeah, I don't want to buy anything that's going to be stuck in here. It, it has to be movable and anything that we purchase will eventually move into the new space.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Great. Are there any further session of 4.6? No? All right. If there's no further discussion, then I'll take a motion to approve 4.6.
Motion.
That came from Doc Candell and, and from, seconded from Gabe Paulson. Allison, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Haroff.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. All right. Thank you for that, Allison. That brings us to five, which is the city managers' report.
I'm going to be very brief, Ben and Mayor. I've got more to talk about later when we talk about our COVID activities. I, I did want to remind the community that the county project on, on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard is well underway. And while we're happy to take in comments, concerns or criticisms, we'll just be passing them along. It's a county project. But I just, folks need to be patient moving through that corridor. It's fairly constrained and will be for a while at different locations as they do the project. The other thing I wanted to note is I anticipate that the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority will have a executive officer hired within the next few weeks and that's a big positive as we start to advance the mission of that JPA, which we're a founding member of. And on a personal note, it excites me because I've been part of a team sort of propping up the agency until the executive officer comes on board and I'll be pleased to clear that off of my plate. So that's all I have tonight.
So will we. You have too much on your plate. All right. Are there questions on that? And then I'm looking forward to hearing more about in later on in our business items. So that brings us to six, which is council members' reports and comments. Anybody would like to start? How about you, Gabe?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Ray. I wanted to just briefly report last or a few sessions ago, we were working, Vice Mayor Haroff and I with the Mobile Home Ad hoc Committee and had a bit of a hiatus with all the fire activity. So the California State Legislature has closed session and the two bills on the table, Senate Bill 999 and Assembly Bill 2895, which were targeting mobile home parks specifically and long-term leases and rent controls did not pass. So, so we know that that's not on the table. I will probably reach out in the coming week to the, both the, the park operators and the residents and see what we can do as we're about a month away from their rent increase. And, you know, I've consulted with Vice Mayor Haroff for trying to see how we can, you know, work towards some kind of conclusion here and make some recommendations. So more to come on that. And I think that's it for now.
Anyone else have any council member reports?
Catherine, I, I can if others, unless others want to step in.
Go ahead. And why don't you report also on our LL and CC working group meeting? That we had yesterday.
Yes, I can do that. But the, the thing that I wanted to personally bring up, since I'm kind of on MCE fame this evening, is something that's very exciting to me. With MCE Clean Energy, we are in the process of, because of our very strong financial situation right now, we're in the process of getting going through, going through a process that will give us an ability to issue bonds, which will in turn allow MCE to make investments in its own infrastructure going forward into the future. This, this would be another first for MCE Clean Energy. We have an ad hoc committee that we've set up on, on that committee and I will be the representative of that committee to the Board of Directors for MC Clean Energy and advising them about our progress with that. But it's a, it's a, it's an exciting, it's an exciting thing, exciting thing for us to be parting up. So on the, so Catherine, you wanted to talk about the, the community facility?
No, just that we need to have meetings once a month with the, the Commons Foundation.
Yeah.
About the issues regarding the library and community center future. So and we met yesterday and intend to keep this working group together to continue the discussions about the library and community center.
Yeah. And I think that's about all we can really talk about at this, this point. I mean, we're continuing to have very productive conversations with the foundation. There are obviously different opportunities that we need to address. And a big part of the conversation that we've been having with the foundation is figuring out the, the different opportunities that may present themselves in terms of the way in which they may engage with different proposals that we're going to be considering. You know, we have had some proposals that are out there. I think they've been sitting around for a little bit from the beginning of the year. I think we're going to try to reinvigorate that process a little bit and make sure that the foundation is fully engaged in, in that conversation. And I think they're very willing to, to do that. So that's, that's terrific. So it's, it's not really, there's not an outcome, but really there's there to report from that conversation, I don't think. But we're still moving forward.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to seven, which is public hearings and there are so eight is business item. 8.1 is a report from the Ad hoc Committee participating in the evaluation of the name of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. So the council would like to hear a report from the committee, our representatives on that committee, which is Vice Mayor Haroff and Councilmember Candell. So take it away.
Sure. Scott, unless you want to go forward, I'm, I'm happy to make a couple of starting comments.
Go ahead.
So this is a conversation that we've been having. It is part of a larger conversation that we've been having within the community about the use of Sir Francis Drake as a, a naming protocol, I guess, if you want to call it that. Obviously, we, we, we took action, which I thought was completely appropriate with respect to the Sir Francis Drake statue, which I guess is still sitting over at the Ross LA Santeria District Corporation yard. So we'll have to figure out how to deal with that. Drake High School has now been, I think they've dropped their name. At least for the time being, and we're having an ongoing process with various jurisdictions to assess the future of the naming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. We've had a couple of meetings. This is a process that's really been led by wonderful Chantel Walker of the Marin County Free Library. She's been very helpful in organizing the conversation and bringing in different experts and folks that have thought a lot about this issue over time. At this point, we're really kind of focusing on educating the public on various historical issues regarding the naming of the street, particularly involving the coastal me walk community and trying to bring them in, into that conversation. Last meeting we had was, I think it was on August 17th. And it's been a very, it's been a very helpful dialogue to, to be a participant in. So as I said, we're working with various jurisdictions that have some role in this process, including the county Larksburg. Is that part of the street is in our jurisdiction? But Ross and San Anselmo and Fairfax as well. I'm very pleased that at the suggestion of our supervisor, Kate Rice, that Dan Schwartz, our city manager, has been dragged into this process to help coordinate a conversation with different jurisdictions to make sure that we're working together in a cooperative way at an administrative, administrative level. So I'm hoping we're going to develop some direction and not just have an ongoing process of discussion about this issue that could stretch out, you know, for an extensive period of time in trying to get sooner rather than later to a point where we can at least make recommendations to the community about where we ought to go in terms of the naming of, of the street. So Scott, unless you have something else you want to add?
Oh, yeah, just very briefly, just, just my, taking my summary on this. We left the last meeting with the direction to try to figure out how much renaming the street was going to cost to each individual jurisdiction that's going to be affected by it. And then we are going to come back and discuss if there is something better that can be done with that money to benefit the people who were trying to benefit by changing the names and bring that back to our individual city councils and say, hey, it's going to cost half a million dollars to, you know, change the name of Sir Francis Drake. Would we rather use that half a million dollars to do something else that might benefit, you know, the indigenous, you know, community or whatever, whatever we choose to, to have the, the effect that we're trying to have by changing the name? And then the, the only other issue is while it would be fantastic if all of the jurisdictions agreed and either we all renamed the name, renamed Sir Francis Drake, or we all didn't, that is certainly not guaranteed. So I, I think the way we left it is that while we would like that to happen, we're going to leave it up to the individual jurisdictions to decide on their own and, you know, maybe there's a recommendation of where we're all leaning. But there was some difference of opinion of what the constituents of the different communities wanted in a very different constituency. You know, if you're, for example, in Fairfax as opposed to in Ross, I think they look at this issue very differently. So I'm not sure we're going to get that consensus, but we'll, we'll keep everybody posted. And that's, that's my summary.
So I have a few questions. Is the major, are the major landowners, for instance, the National Park Service or the California State Park, which runs through that area, are they at the table also?
They are not. At the table right now is really just the representatives from the individual jurisdictions and the city managers, some of the city managers from those jurisdictions to, to help move it along one way or another, get us the research that we need so we can make proper recommendations.
Has there been a, has it been brought up that the, of a possibility of putting something on a, on a ballot, a referendum on a ballot and getting the consensus of the elected on that? Has that been brought up?
I, I, I think right now we are looking at the different costs. And I think putting it on the ballot would be an additional cost. And the, I think the concern that some of the people on the panel are having is that we don't want to, you know, if we are going to spend X number of dollars, we would like to use that money as efficiently as we can to help the people we're trying to help and not waste it. Well, waste is probably the wrong word, not invest it in, in different ways that, that may not give us the right outcome. And, and Kevin and Dan, if I'm, you know, I don't want to speak for, for anyone myself. That's just my, my interpretation.
Are these, is the discussion also about other place names that have references to Sir Francis Drake other than just the Boulevard? Because there must be dozens of them in Marin County.
I think this committee is really focused on the Boulevard only because that's the, what goes through all of the different jurisdictions. I think for the individual things, whether it's the school or the statue, that's really up to the individual city or city to deal with. And again, I don't mean to be for, for Kevin or Dan, if you want to jump in.
No, 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 that, that, that's perfect, that's perfectly fine. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, my, my network connection dropped, so I'm, I'm back on now. But Scott's completely correct. The, the focus of this conversation is strictly on the street and the the interests of different parts of our community in how we might address the naming issue and also, you know, and Scott is completely correct that we need to take into account cost considerations that might be associated with, with the changing of the name. But it's, it's really focused on limiting, limited to that. And we haven't really involved entities outside of Marin County jurisdictions at this point.
Okay. And, and how often are you all meeting?
I think it's meeting is scheduled for next month. Is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, I think so. And I think Dan also is having separate conversations with his counterparts in different cities and, and the county, which will inform what, what, the kind of conversation that we will have at an elected level.
Great. Thank you for participating on that. I haven't had the time to watch the recordings yet, but I've heard there's some really interesting historical discussion from multiple different perspectives being, being put forward.
They're, they're absolutely They're they're absolutely are. And I think that this this is one, whatever the outcome of this, it's been an enriching experience, at least for me, to be able to hear from different parts of the community that whose voices may not have been heard as much as they maybe should have in the past.
Did you have any question about that, Gabe, or is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just a brief question. Thank you. As far as the coastal me walks have the Great Rancheria, you know, asked to be at the table, or has there been any discussion with them?
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the at the table comment because the mayor also used that terminology.
Okay.
That suggests we're at a point where there's stakeholder engagement, and we're not anywhere near that point yet. So with the, this particular groups had two public meetings and one was just hear what the public had to say. And the other was an invitation to experts in different questions we were receiving. And the Great Rancheria was one of the groups that presented on sort of the history of tribal involvement. It's now mostly at the staff level, and we're working on what a process meeting is going to look like. And it's at that point, I think you'd identify the stakeholders who have a more material impact from the name change in terms of owning property, for example, along the Boulevard. So so I didn't want, I don't want the public to think there's some table and we're excluding anybody because there isn't one. So.
Thank you for clarifying. That was not the right terminology. Thank you for clarifying that. Great. I think we do have one hand raised in the audience to ask you a question about this, if you would be interested. Looks like it's Ms. Winters.
Cindy Winter, it's your turn for a public comment.
Thank you. The question is, what does the Larksburg public at large think about renaming Drake? And that is a question that has to be resolved. As of last month, Larksburg had 9,327 registered voters within its jurisdiction. Will their opinions be solicited? When council members have been so outspoken in favor of change, any standard outreach process for public comment would be a charade. Why should anybody bother to express a contrary view when it is so obviously futile? Besides, out of nine thousand and some voices, only a relative few would speak of public outreach. For a decision this critical, each and every registered voter needs an opportunity to freely express their opinion, and that can be done only by some kind of mail ballot. I have an idea for an inexpensive ballot, which I'll send to our city manager. And it need not be the ultimate idea, but it might start new thinking along some new lines. Those are my views. Here is the opinion of a crisis management professional. Renaming a public structure is a major undertaking requiring roughly 12 to 18 months of public consultation and deliberation. The very worst way to go about it is to ramrod it through. A botched renaming would leave a sour taste among your constituents, perhaps resolving an unforeseen political blowback. The professional is Crisis Manager Blake Rhodes, who spoke on August 27th at a Tam Union High School district meeting. He was outstanding. He was formerly in charge of media relations for the San Francisco Giants, which probably had a crisis every few days and is now the Senior Vice President at Mackenzie Communications. I hope you will seek to call upon Mr. Rhodes for even a one hour consultation. Listen to him and set yourselves on a course more appropriate for for moving this difficult problem forward in a way where nobody gets really upset.
Thank you, Cindy. I think they're very early as in this conversation, and we are just two members participating on a large committee. But go ahead, go ahead, and you can send that email with that link, and maybe our our representatives would find it interesting to look at that.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, can I just respond? Cindy, I want, I just want to thank you for that comment. I think at this point, we're still gathering information. I think the vote of whether you would like to change the name of the Boulevard would be very different, depending on what it's going to cost us, which we don't know yet, how long it's going to take, which we don't know yet, all these other factors. So I I appreciate what you're saying, and I think you are correct that it's good to get get a feeling from the from the the people in Larksburg, whether it's by an official vote, by a survey, you know, somehow to get some feedback. But I think we're still a little bit early for that. That's all.
Is there anyone else, Allison, who would ask, like to speak on this business item?
Yes, we have one more public comment from caller ending 1402.
Yes, James Holmes, Larksburg. I second and share the concerns that Ms. Winters made, and I just have two brief comments. One is that the the story of how Drake Boulevard got its name is itself a very, very interesting part of Marin history, which hopefully will continue to be eliminated and illuminated, not eliminated as the process moves on. My question is, in as the committee attempts to evaluate generally the cost factors, are they looking solely at the costs to the governmental jurisdictions involved, or are they also attempting to assess in some manner the costs to the private entities involved?
Thank you, James. Do you, Kevin and Scott, is there analysis of the?
Again, I just kind of want to reiterate, this is Kevin. We're at a very early stage in this conversation. So really, what we're trying to do now is to get input from different people who may want to inform the process. We're not, we're not at that at that point yet. Dan, I saw you raising your hand.
Well, I am a glutton for punishment, so I am the head of the staff committee that's doing all the research. And and we are looking at the impact to everyone, property owners and government entities.
So and I'm sorry, Dan, could you, I was curious.
We're looking at the impact to both property owners and government entities.
Right. My my question though was, is there, are there going to be two separate statistics? Like, if we do the name change, this is what it's going to cost the public, and here's a separate number of what it's going to cost the private sector? Will there be a breakdown, private sector of?
We're going to do that to the best of our ability by explaining what both the public and private entities have to do. It's a little challenging to to do an exact price for either group. It's a little easier for us to get a refined number for our own costs. But, you know, for example, right now, we have someone researching how the postal service would deal with the name change of a street. And we're going to define all of that for private citizens. And we can kind of put a rough idea of what we think that might cost somebody, but we don't. It'll be rough. We won't know exactly. You know, there's a margin of error, but we will try to price that out.
That's perfect. Thank you.
And the people doing that kind of analysis, that that's not our staff, is it? It's county staff?
Some of them. It's some Larksburg staff and some San and Salmo staff.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think, thank you for that presentation and keep working at it and looking forward to hearing more as it goes along.
And and thanks to Dan for being a glutton for punishment.
I told him he takes on too much stuff, so but. All right, eight point two, financial update on service levels, please.
Thank you. I am going to take over the screen and give you a PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, that's come up on the screen.
Yes.
There is.
So both in council meetings recently and offline, council members have expressed to me a desire to start heading down a path where we're planning and preparing for how we'll cope with the financial impact of the current pandemic recession that we're experiencing. As I've said, it's a little challenging right now because we still don't have great data. And we're in a situation where this economy is not behaving the way the recessions that we have experienced in the past have occurred. So it's we're not able to predict right now as well as we might normally do. But with that said, there are a lot of things we can start to do with you as a council to give you the tools and empower you to have these conversations as we go forward. So our, my goal is to spend the next several council meetings giving you some thoughts and data and structure so that you can have those conversations. You know, we were able to make a series of cuts, including some one time expenditure changes that are intended to help us survive this fiscal year, which we think will be the worst of the pandemic. But right now, our current express plan that we included as part of our budget presentation is to rely more heavily on the general fund reserve in the subsequent years. The council can certainly start to examine both the cost expenditure side of our operation and also our revenue side of our operation to see if there's ways to further close the gap. So tonight, I want to start with this presentation, which is about service levels and how your staff thinks about service levels, in particular, how I think about them as we do budgeting. This will be a little bit more of an academic exercise tonight. And then I've developed a schedule to start to roll out tools, and this will help us. We would really like to get through the first quarter before we start to get into numbers because that'll give us a better sense of where we are and where we're headed. So what I'm proposing tonight is to talk to you about service levels and then at your next council meeting, although we're not ready to fully close the books on the past fiscal year, Kathy Orm, the Administrative Service Director, feels comfortable. She can give you a preliminary review of how we performed in the last fiscal year. So we'll do that at your next council meeting. And it's really looking like a just fascinating financial story. We were outperforming our budget by a significant margin in the first two quarters of the last fiscal year. In the third quarter, we did decently, but the pandemic was starting to affect finances. And then we dropped off a bit of a cliff in the last quarter. And so we probably are going to show you what that all looked like month by month, because it'll start to give you some sense of trends. Then at your October 7 meeting, we're going to go over 2020 trends and indications that we're starting to see because by then we'll have more data that we can work with. And then at the October 7, we'll also review what's in the general plan versus what's not in the general plan because I think it's really critical for the discussion that the council wants to have. And then on the 21st, we'll review mandates and obligations and expenditure levels, and then I'll talk a little bit about mandates tonight. And then we'll also talk about what revenue opportunities might exist for the city so that you can then outline the deck, the next steps that you would like to take in doing our fiscal planning. So service levels, you'll see a lot of literature out in the in the city management realm in terms of how to talk about service levels. I typically talk about them as having three levels. There's sort of your mandated service levels, the things you have to do. And then there are the normal or standard service levels, the levels that we establish to meet the community's needs. And then, of course, there's always that ideal or optimum where we would be meeting the highest industry standards and I've never seen a city operate entirely at an optimum level, but there certainly are periods where different departments are funded to operate at a level close to ideal or optimum. So here's where we get into the Dan Schwartz sort of academic discussion tonight. One of the ways that we that I think about service levels and meeting our goals is is to think about them in terms of a form of an S curve, where you have an X Y kind of outline or axis setup, and you have community satisfaction on your Y axis. You have staff resources there on your X axis. And essentially, what I'm conveying with this information is that, you know, when we start to go from no staff and no resources and we start to apply them, we gently move up this curve where we're satisfying the community's needs. We eventually reach a point where we're kind of in a nice operational norm and we're satisfying most of the community demand. But there is some point where you could keep throwing staff resources and staffing resources at a service, and you're not going to improve the service levels anymore because you're not you've you've reached a point where everybody's sufficiently satisfied. And so you'd be overspending at that point. So the sweet spot for us is to try to be here. And this is the area we tend to pursue when we're staffing. We sometimes try to come down a little bit on this curve because we can always outsource temporarily to get ourselves up to here, up to that point where we're at diminishing returns. And one of the problems with being staffed up really high is if we're up that high and then we experience a recession, we may have to let people go. So we try to do a balance between what is our our committed staff and what's fungible so that we can cut readily when we need to. And so another big factor when I think about our staffing levels on an S curve is the fact that community expectations do change with circumstances. And the current circumstances we're in is an excellent example. We really appreciate the community has set its expectations during these early months of the pandemic at a lower level than they normally would. They're understanding that we can't perform at the service levels we would like to because of the restrictions of the pandemic, including the financial restrictions and constraints that we're facing. When the economy is robust and things are doing well, the public's expectations of us go up. And so that's a variable that we are constantly monitoring. And when I think of staff and resources in this fashion, the council's critical role is you're the sounding board of what the community expectations are. You're the group that needs to be telling me and the staff whether we're meeting those expectations or not. It's just a fact of the way government works that your staff mostly gets the negative feedback. We know we're not meeting somebody's expectations. We don't always know when we are meeting people's expectations, other than the fact that we're not getting complaints. So what I do know from my experience is that over a cup of coffee or when you're out and about, and I know that's a little more difficult in the pandemic, you're the sounding board for people to tell us the things we're doing well and the things we could do better. And so your feedback's critical for me in terms of knowing where to direct staff and resources to meet the community's demand. So there is another, sorry for my geeking out on graphs tonight, but there is another way I I tend to think about meeting service levels, and that's the workload aspect of what we're doing. And so it's important to understand that the workload for any given department or any given staff person ebbs and flows over time and moves up and down. So you have these sort of peaks and valleys of demand that you place. That's true of anybody in any job. For us, the the challenge is that in some departments, this is a very predictable thing. We know that in recreation, we have the busy time of the year, and we know we have the slow time of the year. And then we have know we have the slow time of the year. And then we have other departments like building and planning and building, where there's so many variables playing into their demand curve. We anticipated that planning and building, for example, wouldn't be particularly busy during the pandemic, at least in the early days. What we're finding is that quite busy. What they're busy with has changed, though. They're not getting quite the dynamic range of projects that they get during a robust economy. They're getting the types of projects that people are comfortable spending their money on right now. So solar permits are off the charts. This, right now, they're very busy. They've been getting a lot of demand for people who wanted to install solar. People are doing a lot of commissioned projects on their property that are outside. And so as an aside, when we get into budget going into September and October, as we discussed with you, one of the difficulties for Kathy and me is we're looking at this is they're very busy, their workloads are high, but those are not high-revenue activities. And so they're not offsetting their costs the way we would like. So it's, it's a challenge for us. Getting back to thinking about meeting the service level workload, though, you know, in our ideal situation, we would have the resources to staff, so we were always able to meet demand. And if we have a situation where we're staffing above any peak in our demand curves for our workload, then we have this area, which is our excess capacity. And that's where we're able to do the additional things that, that are kind of the, the niceties that we don't make part of our normal work program. This is the kind of curve you might see actually in your administrative department, in the administration department, because we're a very small group. Our workload ebbs and flows. And so when our workload dips, we take that excess capacity and we assign it to a lot of the policy issues that are not mandated, but we know the council's interested in us pursuing. That would be a good example of when we staff on the curve at the peak level. But for the most of the departments, we try to find some sweet spot where we're staffing so that we're generally covering our workloads. But we know we're going to have peaks that exceed our capacity, and that's when we bring in support. Again, trying to balance our budget in a way that if we need to cut, we can. A great example is in planning, where they routinely bring in an outside contract planner when the workload's going to these peak positions. And that's very helpful for us, but it keeps us from overstaffing when we need to make reductions. So this is a big theme that we need to explore as we go through our budget, and that's the concept of what a mandate actually is. People are often surprised when I tell them that not all mandates are the same. And in fact, very few mandates truly exist for local government. Most of our mandates are the result of decisions and choices that we make, not necessarily that, that we have to do it. You know, we have a corporate legal obligation to the state and the people to provide a certain level of public safety. And we have a, a number of regulatory mandates that we have to meet, that we do through public works, and to a lesser degree, through planning. But a lot of what we think we have to do are choices that we've made. So folks think they're mandated, but in reality, a lot of them are quality of life choices. We have a library, and we have a commitment to the community to offer a library. We're not mandated to have a library. We have a recreation department. We're not mandated to have a recreation department. But those are critical parts of the quality of life choices that we've made, that we want to offer to, to our community. We are not mandated to, to pull weeds, but we don't want to have weeds all over our community. And so we make these constant important quality of life choices. And that's how we do a lot of our budgeting. And so a lot of scaling down to address the gap that we are experiencing and may continue to experience for some time is to ask questions about the quality of life choices that we've made, and whether we want to look at downscaling some of those choices, at least temporarily. The other thing is, a lot of folks, a lot of things, people say, well, you're obligated to do that because it's a law. But a lot of the laws that obligate your staff to expend resources are in the municipal code. And a lot of them were adopted by the council for a variety of reasons, and they're not required by any higher entity legally. So one option that the council can certainly do is start to go through with us the municipal code, particularly around issues of nuisance, and ask whether we should be downscaling the, the levels of what we define as a nuisance, or how we enforce against nuisance. And that's just one example. Boards and commissions are not required necessarily by law. Some commu, some councils elect to serve as their own commissions and their own boards, and not delegate those authorities down to lower entities. And that can be done, and there can be cost savings by doing that. Excuse me, I'm going to close the door to my office. There's someone here in the background. The noise is distracting.
If anyone has questions during his presentation, just, I'm sure Dan wouldn't mind answering them as during the course of his presentation. Is that all right with you? Anybody has questions about as you go along?
So I'm actually almost done to
Sure.
the discussion on the floor.
Okay, terrific.
Another big one is grants. You know, when times are tough, we often hear people say, why aren't we out looking for a lot of grants? Well, we do actually evaluate a lot of grants. But a lot of folks don't realize that sometimes the cost to take a grant is extremely high. One of the questions I ask the staff whenever they see a grant that interests them is, what will it cost us to accept the grant? There are grants out there where we will spend a dollar to get a dollar. There are grants out there where we'll spend $2 to get a dollar. And those don't always look like great deals. You know, our ideal is a grant where we're spending 10 cents to get 90 cents, which is what we did with the bridge, with the Bonner Bridge construction. So we have to, to be thoughtful. And we sometimes need to go back and look at grants we've taken, which have ongoing costs, and ask ourselves if, in times of financial difficulty, if grants we've accepted are ones we may not want to accept anymore because of the costs involved with them. And we do that type of analysis consistently. But I think what happens in, is that as we get into these more difficult financial times, we may need to have some discussion with you at the council about whether some grants we've taken in the past on an annual basis are ones we should forego for a time period to lower our administration, our cost to administer and facilitate those grants. And then similarly, a lot of what we refer to as mandate is actually something that's been mandated because we want to qualify for a pot of money from the state. To a lesser degree, to the federal government. It's mostly the state, where if we don't meet a certain goal the state has set, we won't be eligible for particular pots of money. There's a lot of talk right now in the state about setting housing requirements so that you can't earn road monies and transportation facilitating monies unless you meet those housing goals. That's a, that's a, that's a higher level example of incentives. But we take incentives up and down the organization that we found a council in the past and said, we think we should accept the obligation tied to this particular directive from the state so that we can be eligible. So some of those decisions may be worthy of revisiting in the coming months as we, as we take a hard look at our financial situation. Are we willing to forego certain opportunities to avoid certain costs? And what's the net balance? And what's the impact to the community? A lot of that incentive money, a lot of those grant monies are the ones that we use to get costs out of the general fund as much as possible. So those are all variables that have to be in play. And so I've kind of presented all that to you tonight, mostly as a, this is to serve more as a very preliminary primer or overview, so that we can have this discussion that, again, I think will take us probably about four meetings to really get through in terms of going through material and providing you with up-to-date numbers. And I'm happy to talk about any of the timetable. I'm happy to talk about the presentation tonight. But this is just a kickoff to, to a process that's going to be ongoing. In general, I want to remind the council, we, we did the actual where are our service levels talk in the budget. It's very difficult right now, because a lot of our, a lot of what we scaled down isn't entirely financially motivated, but it's also the simple fact that we can't operate at full capacity. The library is an excellent example. The library budget was cut both because of the recession, but also because we don't need our, our Rb and part-time employees during the pandemic, because we're not open to the public. And so we've made a lot of staffing reductions in that regard. And as we start to understand what our new online operations look like, we're getting a better sense of what our staffing levels should be. And I think during the next several meetings, we'll be reporting, we'll have the department heads explaining to you where they are staffing level-wise, what they're doing to maintain and meet the public expectations with the levels that, with, of resources they have available. A lot of that'll be about the one-time expenditures we're making to transition to digital services all throughout the organization. So with that matter, Mayor, I turn it to you and the council.
Okay. Thanks for teeing that up. I like your squidly lines. It's high tech you got going on there. Are there questions about this preliminary service level and discussion, or about this schedule for what's going to happen in the next four meetings? No? It was pretty clear. So I'm looking forward to seeing how we can assess the service levels sort of pre-pandemic, during the pandemic, if that's possible, and project at what they may be as we go on a more online platform. Doesn't look like anybody has any questions about this. Am I missing anybody? No? All right. Thank you for that.
No, that was, that was very helpful. Thank you.
Uh, it looks like we have our work cut out for us in the month of October. I don't see any member of the public who has a question on that either. So that gives us to update on the city's activities in response to COVID-19. 8.3, please.
Yes, Mayor, Council. So you may have seen that the county and the 11 municipalities, 11 cities in Marin County had been trying to build a task force to jointly administer and enforce the public health orders. And the ordinance that the county passed specifically addressing compliance around masks and some other issues around compliance and operations with public health orders. We've, as we've started to see the nature of the complaints that are coming in, it's become clear that each jurisdiction's probably better equipped and can be more effective and, and responsive on their own, because the problems are very localized, and they need to be addressed quickly. And we're all just better equipped to do that in our own jurisdiction. So while there's going to remain a lot of central coordination and information sharing, we're all taking on those tasks at our own level. So we've created a, an email address that people can send us concerns or complaints about what they perceive to be violations of the shelter-in-place orders and the public health orders. Ours is sipviolations@cityofartsburg.org. And we'll have some, an interface and some information on the webpage shortly to, to tell folks they can use that email. Folks can also use the call-in line that the county has, or the county's email, and that information will get forwarded to us. This might be a slight, a 24-hour delay before we get to it. So, but that's another option for folks who want to, to want to use it. And I've had a chance to review some of the things that have been coming in, and we're starting to work out our game plan on how to address them. In general, I think a lot of what we're hearing reported is unintentional failure to comply. Folks are confused a lot of times about what the rules are. And when we talk to them and explain it to them, then they, they, they comply. Where I have not experienced, and I've talked to Chief Norton about what the Centralman Police have experienced, and it's similar. We haven't experienced that defiant person who knows they're violating the rules and has no intention of complying with them. I'm sure they're out there, and we'll probably come across them as we continue to march through this experience. But I'm pleased to report, we haven't experienced that yet. We also have a lot of businesses that are facing the, the challenge that the governor and/or the Marin Public Health official modify the rules every other week. And so what was compliant or out of compliance one week, two weeks later can suddenly be on the other side of the fence. And so we appreciate that. And our general goal will be to take an approach of putting people on notice and giving them a window to a bait, a problem that, that exists. So that's been, been a primary focus of mine for the last week, and we've built our team to deal with this internally. Another area, though, on a more positive note, is we've had very positive engagement with businesses, particularly restaurants, about operating outside in the public right-of-way. Folks have been downtown, have seen that three of the restaurants are now authorized to be in parking spaces outside of their locations. We have two more that are pursuing permission to be on the sidewalks. And so we expect to work things out with them shortly. We're now being approached by businesses and restaurants that want to make modifications in their parking lots and are seeking temporary relief from restrictions about doing that. So we're working with them, and we expect to be facilitating some of those operations. We've also had some successful outreach with some of our small business owners who operate, for example, yoga, Pilates, that sort of thing. And we've been actually at a nominal amount renting them space in some of our parks for them to conduct, actually, it's all been in Piper Park, to conduct classes. So that's worked really well, and it's allowed them to continue to, to operate. I do want to remind folks, because it's, it's something folks need to, to think about as they struggle with their own situations. It's really important to call us if you're trying to operate your business and you're not sure what the rules are. We'll help you figure out what they are. We've been starting to hear that some folks are trying to conduct their businesses on, on their private property in their backyards, for example. And that, while that's not spoken to necessarily in the public health orders, that's actually a violation of our municipal code. So we don't want to necessarily crack down and stop people from earning a living, but we need to talk about what, why those rules and restrictions exist, and try to sort out the individual cases. So it's just best if people give us a call before they launch their effort, because that'll help us to guide them to a place that we feel we can, can defend why we're allowing that to happen. With that matter, Mayor, I'll open up to any questions.
Dan, I know a lot of us have been receiving emails regarding rent control, rent stabilization. Can you speak to what the county is doing in regards to that extension?
So the county is, the board is going to take up, and I anticipate probably approve an extension of the rent mor, eviction moratorium. They've sort of been doing it and rolling three-month windows. So So that's why it's got folks wondering again because that window is expiring. I I don't have any indication where I would expect them not to. The county administrator asked the managers if we had any concerns, and we said we felt it was appropriate to continue the moratorium because we all are worried about the COVID exposure implications of folks being evicted. I have not had a lot of time to digest all the bills that passed in the legislature. There was a significant one. It truly was one of the midnight hour bills, but it does provide a path for qualified individuals to only pay 25% of their rent during this period. And so that's another tool that's that's out there. And I don't yet have enough familiarity with that law to to educate people about its implications. And, you know, if anyone's watching the landlord community, we're worried about you too. So, you know, I want to assure you, at least in my committees that I sit on, we also worry about making sure that our landlords survive financially because if we put them in a position where they can't survive financially, we may be creating a new problem down the road.
And I think my last question is, you know, the state changes the criteria a lot. And just this last week, they've changed a new color coding system, purple to yellow to red. Are we going to have any time to update our website with the new COVID information?
So the county Health and Human Services Department this week has been doing, making the rounds, doing a pretty thorough PowerPoint presentation that explains both the state system and its implications for for Marin. When they make that available to us to incorporate in our website, then we're going to do that. Right now, I think they're actually systematically presenting it to key stakeholder groups to get feedback because they want to make sure it's as informative as possible because it is a big shift in the way we're thinking about regulating activity during the during the pandemic. The gist of it is that most of us are in purple counties, and that means we're still in the most heavily restricted category. I think it's 38 of the counties in the state are purple right now. But Marin has been trending toward red, which would start to open some things up. So I think we can be optimistic about that.
Please.
I think you froze for a bit, Madam Mayor.
Did I?
Just came back.
Ah, okay. Any questions on that? I'll turn Wi-Fi off here. Any questions on that? No?
No, thank you.
Okay. I actually just had one more, and that was, I know some of our firefighters were out helping do mutual aid to respond to some of these enormous fires that are happening. Any, we've not had any injuries or anyone, some of them have returned, I see.
I think the city attorney will let me go slightly afield of the subject matter to say, I'm pleased to report all our firefighters are healthy and and safe. Some of them are still out.
Well, that's COVID-related because they, you know, there's whole new ways of wildland fire.
I have, because I'm doing all the work on the wildfire prevention authority, I I have to use this opportunity to sing the praises of Chief Jason Weber of the county fire department because he has called me more than once from the front lines to make sure I have what I need to do my my work. So I'm very appreciative of that.
That's great.
And then our last item is a financial update. If there's any news, I think it sounds like we're going to be doing that in tandem with a lot of other discussions in the month ahead. So.
Yeah, this, I did, I've been using this item, and I'm probably going to consolidate these two updates going forward. But I have been using this to talk about the fiscal impact on the city. We are pretty close to where we can put a number on, or we can tell you the number we're going to report to the state as qualifying COVID expenditures that are for our CARES Act money because essentially the county, the state treated that as an advancement of money toward costs until we filed. So we've gotten two of the payments that we're going to get. We're going to get six payments that total 150,000 when we're done. We're going to be well in excess of 150,000. So we actually, if there is another allocation of CARES money, we probably are close to qualifying for whatever that allocation will be too. And that includes our public safety costs that the city, it's primarily that in our digital services. We've actually, as the council's heard me say, you know, we took a five-to-10-year program to digitize the city, and we condensed quite a bit of it into three months. But that took this expenditure of a lot of unanticipated funds. So so we'll be seeking some of that.
Okay. Are there any questions of that last item, 8.4, city financial update? I see none. So thank you all for being here virtually. And our next meeting is on Wednesday, September 16th. And I think we at least have one topic, which we'll be revisiting the parking permit process that you all did when I was out of town. So if there's nothing else, I think we will adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, so moved. I don't think we need a roll call vote on that one, right, Allison?
Correct.
All right. Good night, everyone, and I look forward to our further discussion in another week or so.
Thank you all for being here tonight.
That's good. Have a good night, everyone.